Time is precious and yours is very precious. Sorry I'm late.
Okay, as Secretary of the Planning Commission, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cindy. And we are Chair and Co-Chair out today, so we would, we've done this before recently. Would like to ask if there was a motion to appoint anyone as the Chair for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Madam Secretary, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Worsham as our Acting Chairman for this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, all right, we can begin the meeting. Mr. Chairman.
First thing on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. Does any of the Commissioners have any changes or additions to the minutes? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Does anybody have a second?
Second.
Let's have all those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. First item on the agenda is request for final plat approval of Battles Trace subdivision Phase 8, 48 lot major subdivision. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to read the whole agenda item? Do we?
I think you do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll reread it then. First item is SD 24.07, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Goodwin Mills K. Wood LLC on behalf of the owner, Retirement Systems of Alabama, for final plat approval of Battles Trace Phase 8, 48 lot major subdivision. The property is approximately 28.53 acres and is Zoned TR, tourist resort district. The property is located on the north side of Battles Road, on the east and west sides of Colony Drive. It's PPI NS number 29244, 3 and 37 2296.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the final plat, the last of the first iteration of Battles Trace. Just to kind of give you an idea where we're looking at, the zoning map is on the left. You can see kind of the pink highlighted in the bottom right corner of that zoning map. And then the aerial is on the right. When we first saw this as preliminary plat, we focused on the lots, but the recreation area was kind of a, the pickleball courts and all of that, that's finished out. You can see those now as you go down. That's on the left side. These aerials are, this is from the county, so it's probably, I'd say, almost 18 months old approximately. Kind of the approved plan, or at least a, not the approved plan, this was an exhibit submitted with the annexation of the 99 acres. Just for reference, that's the Phase 8 that we've known about quite some time. I'm really going to kind of skip through a lot of this, and I got to give a lot of credit to Mike Jeffries on this plat and one other on the agenda. He did all the work and then got strep throat this weekend, so I'm kind of stepping in just to present his work. The Phase 8, as you see on the screen, is the lots in question. Everything is, this is slightly old, the site's more stable than this right now. This was taken early April, but there's kind of the aerial of the work done on the east and west sides. You can see, I will kind of point to one thing I'm going to talk about. You can see a little pipe right here. I'll bring that up in just a second. Yeah, we actually only have one item as a condition on this, the GIS maps that we require, part of the water sewer specs. And ASBILTS in GIS did not meet exactly what I'd like. They're working with our GIS department to get those attributes correct and get them to us. Other than that, everything is complete. This is not, we have kind of the condition to get the follow-up activities. This isn't anything new. This is in the sub regs. We're not requiring any, it's just a reminder, because so many projects, we stand up here, we put in our staff report, that these are the things that have to be done. You know, so the plat has to get recorded in 120 days. The ONM agreement has to get recorded. Those are recorded in the probate court. And then the maintenance agreement, which in this case is only the water lines, these are going to be private roads as part of the TR district, will be submitted to us, go to council for approval, and then the Mayor will ultimately sign that. That begins the terms or the time period and the clock ticking, if you will. So we do recommend conditional approval of this final plat, subject to two conditions. That's completion of the follow-ups that we just went over, and then submit revised GIS ASBILTS shape files. Those are the two conditions. I will say we did get, last week I believe, one public comment that had some questions about that pipe and the sidewalk along it. We looked at it, it meets the plans that we approved in the preliminary plat. They repaired the sidewalk. The grass doesn't look like it did, you know, when it was lush, but it is growing and we'll get there. The pipe is a little larger, so it does stick out of the water. You know, that was known when we reviewed the preliminary plat, where the older pipe, smaller pipe was submerged most of the time, but as you saw in that aerial, it is visible now. We don't see any hazard. There were some questions about the environmental impact of that. I don't know that there is any, but certainly if there's any questions, we can ask the design team about that. If you all have any questions for us, we're happy to answer those.
Wouldn't anybody representing the developer like to speak?
Hi, I'm Amanda Thompson with Goodwin Mills and K. Wood, and I'm here as owner rep, so if you have any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? Just stand by.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public meeting. Does anybody from the public like to wish, would like to speak to this? Please keep your comments short, three minutes or so, and try not to duplicate what others have said. And when you come up, I'm sorry, state your name and your address.
My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. On the south border of the property, there is an existing fence, which is topped with two strands of barbed wire, which is not consistent with our current regulations or ordinance. And so I'd like to suggest some consideration of removing the barbed wire from the fence. Thank you.
Go ahead, you have something to say?
So the TR district is a very specific zoning It has very specific language, and I don't recall anything about fences and any restrictions, but they're exempt from other parts of our regulations. I can certainly check in, I'm not familiar with where the barbed wire might be.
It's like a cattle fence, and it's all over that area, so I don't know where we start and end with that.
Yeah. Again, being that TR, it's kind of that anomaly, we don't allow private roads anywhere else in the city. There's a lot of things that happen out there that, you know, are not, I don't know, I haven't, first I've really been asked about the barbed wire. I don't know the answer, if that's explicitly stated in the TR district as prohibited or allowed. We can certainly check on that and make sure that gets addressed, if there is a prohibition on it.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Commissioners, anyone like to make a motion or speak to anything? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, SD 24.07 is approved with staff recommendations.
Do we want to add, are you checking into that barbed wire?
The barbed wire doesn't bother me.
Okay.
I don't think we can do anything about the barbed wire if it's there. It wasn't put in as part of this phase. We're only looking at Phase 8.
Okay.
So if it's barbed wire that's been there for 20 years, nothing we can do about it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, looking at the TR district and the zoning ordinance, I don't see any limitations on fencing that would specifically apply to barbed wire, so.
Go ahead, a second.
We can address that as a typical zoning ordinance issue, if it is an issue.
I have a motion for approval of final plat approval of SD 24.07, subject to staff recommendations. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
I do want to verify the staff recommendation will include the number two, the revised GIS ASBILTS within the requirement.
Yes. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Passes unanimously. The next item is SD 24.08, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant CE Civil on behalf of the owner, FST Old Town Investments LLC for preliminary and final plat approval of Morphe Grove, a three lot minor subdivision. The property is approximately 1.26 acres and is Zoned R3, high-density single-family. The property is located north of Morphe Avenue and west of Bishop Road. It's PPI N number 57387.
I think there's a slide that went away, but that's okay. You introduced it. There is the plat and the site data. And this one will be short. There is a fire hydrant that is already there on Morphe Avenue at the entrance to Hawthorne-Glynn 2 subdivision, and all three of these lots meet the minimum lot requirements for the R3. And a note to SE Civil, the final plat must be recorded within 100 days of approval. So some drainage comments, the site slopes north to south, runoff will enter the Morphe Avenue right-of-way ditch and will not require runoff mitigation per the letter from SE Civil, which was in the packet. Water, sewer, gas, and electricity are provided by the City of Fairhope, and an ATC for electricity will be determined at time of construction. AT&amp;T serves the area where the subject property is located. So about connectivity, the subdivision regulations require provision of sidewalks along all streets in the planning jurisdiction of Fairhope. There currently is non-existing sidewalk along Morphe Avenue. The applicant is aware of this and has acknowledged in written correspondence that a sidewalk will need to be installed on Morphe Avenue. So the plat has a utility pedestrian easement for just that. So staff does recommend conditional approval of SD 24.8, Morphe Grove Minor Subdivision, with the following condition of installing the sidewalk along Morphe Avenue. And SE Civil's here?
Yeah. Anyone from SE Civil want to talk about this?
If you guys got any questions.
Okay. We have any questions?
Are you going to actually install the sidewalk or are you just leaving easement there for when time comes?
No, sir, we have a similar project right up at Bishop and Morphe where we did the same thing. Basically, we need to install the sidewalks before we can get final plat approval from the planning staff.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
You're approving preliminary, and we changed this to your back so they didn't have to have a labor. We just will make sure the sidewalks are in place.
Gotcha.
And then everybody's good, they can work with their area to build on.
Nothing further. I'll go ahead and open the public meeting. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? Okay, no one? I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. And anyone, any of the Commissioners have anything to add, or if not, I'll accept a motion.
Say something, I can't hear you.
Did you want to speak to this? I'll go ahead and open the public meeting back up.
So I didn't get my letter until the 29th, so I didn't get anything brought to the meeting.
If you come up and talk to, state your name and your address, and we'll listen to what you have to say. I'll go ahead and open the public meeting back up again.
I'm Ruth Pierce. I live at Nine Fox Run, which is right behind the three houses that they're proposing to build. I don't know if you've ever tried to get off Bishop Road onto Fairhope Avenue. It's very unsafe. Also, from Bishop to Morphe is very unsafe. The water pressure, you can't, on Sunday nights and Monday mornings at 6 o'clock, you can't get water pressure. Have they thought about the water pressure there? It's just so many people, and the school is on the corner. I don't speak very well in front of people, but I'm worried about all the traffic and the water pressure.
Mama, what about the drainage?
Huh?
What about the drainage?
Oh, yes. Since they dug a big hole on the, where they put the new ones, but the water still comes into my yard, in my backyard. There's a stream supposed to be there, but my neighbors have built fences and flower beds, and so the water doesn't go anywhere, except in my yard, the black backyard. This past rain, it got close to my back door, and I know how we have, when it have rain, how it gets, so that should be taken into consideration. Are they going to put a fence there? Will the houses be long, that long? Are they planning on putting three and four and five and six houses there? Townhouses?
Okay.
Is it townhouses or are it apartments?
This meeting is just on subdividing the property. It hasn't.
And let me answer a couple of those. I think some of those are easy, and we can remove some fears. This is zoned for single-family residential. They're taking one large lot and turning it into three lots, so there'll be three homes eligible to be built there. That's all it will be, not apartments.
In the front or the back?
They will all front Morphe Avenue, so there'll be three facing Morphe Avenue. Their backyards will butt up against Fox Run.
About, uh...
Now, the folks putting in fences and flowers and things like that, that's more than likely. Your neighbors in Fox Run and maybe talking to your POA is the right approach there. We're just looking at the three lots, and this particular review only looks at the drains they're creating, the issues they're creating, and the traffic. So just three houses, three lots that would allow three houses. We don't look at what size the house is. Just like every lot in town, there's setbacks they have to build within and rules, but we don't approve exactly what the house looks like.
Which way will the, I don't care how it looks like, but which way will the water go?
I tell you what, we'll ask the engineer, the design team. Michelle addressed it a little bit in the staff report, but we will ask the engineer to come back up and, it all slips from the north to the south.
Yeah.
And it enters the Morphe right-of-way ditch.
Okay.
And will not require runoff, but we'll ask for some clarification on that, okay?
Yeah. Because they dug a big hole in the back of Ed's house, and it's just a mosquito place. Didn't stop it from coming in his yard, so.
And are you, is that, you're in the front side, closer to Morphe?
Yeah, I'm, you're right behind me.
And I'm not a developer, I work for the city. We're reviewing, so. That gets confused quite a bit.
Well, for one thing, you work for the city.
Yes.
I got this in the mail.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm 86 years old, and I got the magnifying glass, and I still couldn't make heads and tails of it.
Well, and that's, you can certainly always call us, we'll help you walk you through it. We post those things online, we do other stuff. We, the only thing we have to do is let you know there's a meeting. Now, we go way above that, and we're here to answer any questions you have right now, okay? So that's, the only thing we have to do, five day, we have to send a letter out five days before a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we all know the post office can't get everything guaranteed there, so we go way earlier than that, try to send it, and it says, call us if you have any questions, and we can make, you know, show you plans. You can come by the office at any time.
What about traffic?
There's three houses here. So what we address by our regulations, the engineers that designed this have to check into some traffic regulations and DOT standards, and they have to say how many vehicles are leaving this site and what that's, is traffic. Not a big, three houses don't really add a lot of traffic that would require, because typically what we're looking at is what does a development have to do to mitigate their traffic concerns? Really not much to do here.
No stop sign or anything to get people to stop on Morphe out of Bishop to get on Fairhope?
That, not as a part of this project. If there's any questions, that's a Public Works kind of looks at stuff like that.
All right, that's the same with the water pressure?
Water pressure, we got the fire flows, they all look good. That's, I don't know if that's a needle in a haystack, if, could be water lines in your subdivision. We checked for these three lots, and the water pressure seems to be really good, so.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, I do think I kind of made eye contact with Larry back there. If there's any questions about the drains, I think he can clarify a little bit on that. If you would like for him to.
Would you like to speak to that, Larry?
Yeah.
Do you want to close the public?
Yeah, we close the public hearing.
Close the public, okay.
Unless there's someone else.
We'll close the public hearing, okay.
Thank you all. Larry Smith, civil engineer for the project. I'll kind of hit on the, all the different things that I was hearing. Hunter addressed most of them very appropriately for me, but yes, we did a fire flow test, and there is adequate fire protection, and, which means that there's plenty of pressure in front of this site. As y'all know, water pressure is a function of the water lines when it's looping around the grid system that Fairhope has. There could be something internal to their subdivision if they're truly experiencing. They shouldn't have that big of a pressure drop just for domestic use, I could see if there was a fire actually occurring, them experiencing that. So it might be something that the utility department might want to make sure there's a valve that's not accidentally closed or partially open in their subdivision. And, I mean, I talk to Darrell on a daily basis, I'd be glad to mention that to him, but as far as this particular project, the fire flow and the water pressure is adequate. As Hunter was saying, this is three residential houses, which doesn't come close to triggering any type of true traffic study. We looked at the amount of cars that were going to be coming and going from the development, based on the city regulations and everything, is fine with that. And then the final, our property slopes from the north to the south, so all runoff associated with this will not flow onto their property. It will flow into the right-of-way of Morphe, so there shouldn't be a negative impact. And just as a rule of thumb, it's a law, they can't impede the flow of water. Their water should be flowing onto this property and then making its way to Morphe, at least a portion of it, from their backyards. So this, the builder can't go in and berm up their property to keep their water off of them and make the problem worse for them. That's also a function, I believe, Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they kind of check on that during the building permit, because we're not grading these sites right now. But they can't impede the flow of water off of the other people's property, and we're not directing water onto their property. And so if y'all have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Did I hit all of them? I think I did.
And I would like to add, Mayor Solomon just texted me, so you can, she's already let Darrell know.
All right.
To check some of the water pressure in the neighborhood, so I appreciate her.
Should I wave to her?
Appreciate her.
Commissioners, any discussion? Or will I accept a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve SD 24.08, Morphe Grove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving SD 24.08, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I say one thing real quick to the lady that spoke? She's, ma'am? Let you know during the building permit process, when, if we go out, when they're building their house, if they do anything that, if they significantly change the topography of the land, or they do those things, we have the authority to make them take drainage measures into account. We make people put gutters on all the time, we have them put swales down property lines to direct water, so that's something we will look at, as Hunter mentioned, during the construction and the permitting process. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself for the next case.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is SD 24.10, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant CE Civil LLC on behalf of the owner, 68 V. Harvest Green West, Harvest Green West 2022 LLC for final plat approval of Harvest Green West Phase 1, a 77 lot subdivision. The property is approximately 42.1 acres and is Zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development. The property is located on the west side of State Highway 181, across from the water subdivision. It's PPI N number 17737.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here's our visual aids. The west side of the property, we kind of overlaid the, this phase, there's two phases, if y'all recall, Phase 1 and Phase 2. We are here for the final plat, for Phase 1 only, and only on the west side of the property. So if there's any other questions or concerns about the other ones, that's not what we're here for tonight. There will be an opportunity when those come in for final plats. Just reference, there is the map for reference in how the lot layout is, where the common areas are. The, just a quick update on the phases, Harvest Green East, we did receive the same application for Phase 1. There's a few things kind of getting worked out there. I hope we see that in the next month or two before you for final approval. And the Phase 2 of Harvest Green East is in the middle of construction. The Phase 2 of this side has not began yet, other than the lift station, and you'll see some kind of access roads, and the pond that is taking drainage from both phases. They do begin, plan to begin construction once this phase is complete. The lift station for this development, you'll see me bring this up in just a second, the lift station is actually in Phase 2, so you'll see a little bit of things we don't normally do in this one, just to ensure that as this evolves, everything is covered. The ALDOT improvements have not received their final approvals. We will require those, ALDOT, we're usually the, when you talk about the chicken or the egg, we're usually the first. ALDOT will not give permits until it works through our planning commissions for approvals, so we typically don't see those final, on, nothing unusual there. These are the aerials, kind of the way the site lays out now. On the right-hand side, you see the roads that have sidewalks. Where you see sidewalks is Phase 1, where the sidewalk ends, that's beginning of Phase 2. You'll see on the left-hand side, a red circle, that is the location of the lift station kind of in the back of Phase 2. Eventually, that will be a lot dedicated to the city, and access to that lot will be through the public roads once the Phase 2 is final platted and approved. Just some contingencies, you'll see some easements and a couple of contingencies there in the event that Phase 2 never happens. We don't foresee that happening, but after the Great Recession, you know, things happen, so we're just trying to cover all bases. Follow-up activities on this, same thing, plat's recorded in 120 days, recorded at ONM, the maintenance and guarantee agreement, and then there is a performance bond as well on the road that accesses the... the maintenance and guarantee agreement, and then there is a performance bond as well on the road that accesses the lift station. And we do have some changes to what came out in your packets. It's a lot of words, but it's, at the end of the day, I'll kind of tell you what they are, and then I'm going to read this for the record. The completion of the, the follow-up activities, that's just standard subdivision regulation requirements, adding the finished floor elevations to each lot. And then a note will be added to the plat that reflects what we just talked about with that lift station and the easements. In the event that the Phase Two does not happen, when that expires, if that preliminary plat ever expires without it happening, I wanted to make sure we get this on record, that we'll have to create a lot for that lift station. I would, I think it's already in the regulations, but just to be clear, I want to use the replat process to do that if it ever happens and not bring it back through the planning commission, just to create that small lot for the lift station. And then there's correspondence from ALDOT. And then there was a few questions on some of the sewer lines. The videos were a little older. They were cleaned out. Everything was cleaned out after the videos were done, and our sewer department needed to see revised sewer lines. If there's any problems, they'll have to basically make the sewer department happy if there's anything that needs to be fixed. But I'm going to actually read this verbatim, if y'all don't have any questions on this, just for our recommendations, since it didn't change. We do recommend, recommend approval of Harvest Green West Phase One, subject to the following conditions, and that is completion of the follow-up activities listed on the previous page, adding the finished floor elevations for each lot. Number three is a note shall be added to the plat to reflect the lot where the lift station is located. And Harvest Green West Phase Two will be dedicated to the city during the final plat approval of Harvest Green West Phase Two. In the event the preliminary plat for Harvest Green West Phase Two expires, before final plat approval is obtained, the lot will be deeded to the city by administrative replat by the owner. Number four, provide correspondence from ALDOT confirming turnouts are permitted for public use. And number five, new videos of the sewer mains shall be submitted to the water and sewer department for review, and any deficiencies shall be corrected to the satisfaction of the water sewer department prior to certificate of approval. That's plat signatures of the city of Faro Sewer Department. If there's any questions from me or the staff, we will certainly answer those, and SE Civil is here to represent the project if there's any questions of them.
Commissioners, have any questions? Someone from SE Civil like to?
Yes, Larry Smith with SE Civil again. We're fine with all the conditions. Just want to clarify on five, and I've spoken with both Darrell and Richard Johnson. The goal on that is, we're going to look at the specific areas that had issues and possibly re-video those to their satisfaction. So, I just wanted to clarify that one part. I believe Hunter said, as long as we're satisfying Darrell and Richard, then he, he doesn't care. But just wanted to clarify that. Other than that, if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
And I should know the answer to this, but when you establish FFEs, is there a rule of thumb you use? Or what is the specific method that you use to do that? Just, I have been told by some, they go to the highest point of the topography and add 18 inches. I've had others tell me they go through some engineering calculation that I'll leave to you, but I'm just curious. What is the methodology?
Every jurisdiction has something a little bit different. Every builder has something a little bit different. In the absence of guidance, the first thing I'll do is go at a minimum 15 inches above the center line of the road. Normally, that's still pretty flat if you're trying to get drainage to go from the back of the lot all the way to the front of the lot. So, then we'll kind of also analyze which direction we have anticipated that drainage to go to see if we need to take it up to 24 inches, something like that.
And so, it's typical 15 inches above the crown of the road?
Correct.
What, how do you handle that when you have heavily sloped lots? We don't have that here. It's flat. But I'm just curious if you've got a.
Well, if, if you remember correctly, on Van Antwerp, we had to come up with a site, a very site-specific, city-approved guidance, where it was, I want to, correct me if I'm wrong, on, you're, you're turning red and smiling across the way.
No, I'm just, they're weird sites.
Yeah. And I just, because we have a note, and I know Hunter and I have talked about it, we have a note that we put on plan reviews, about 15 inches above highest adjacent grade at the footprint, but we don't go at the road specifically. But in the road, it actually, on a flat lot, it works better.
I believe that's the wording that came from Van Antwerp, is when we looked at that, because it used to be above the right-of-way. And in that case, it became an issue, because the right-of-way was, in some instances, 10 feet higher than.
Okay. I would, I'm just, because I know we're establishing FFEs, this is an easy site. It's flat. But I was just curious what your method would be for establishing those FFEs.
That, that's where we typically, as a starting point, we'll look at that. But then we also have to look at how we're going to get drainage around each of the lots. And so, we, we won't go below that, but typically we'll go closer to two feet above.
Got it. Got it.
Commissioners, any other questions? I'll go ahead and open the public meeting. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this? No, then I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Commissioners, any more discussion, or I'll accept a motion?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve SD 24.10, Harvest Green West Phase One, subject to staff conditions as reflected on the screen and the additional notes that were given to us from staff.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? More discussion? All those in favor of, of accepting the motion for approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Okay. The next item on the agenda, which is SD 24.12, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Jade Consulting LLC, acting on behalf of the owner, Two Hands Design and Development LLC, for preliminary plat, plat approval of Hilltop Lot 29. The prop, the property is approximately 1.131 acres and is zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development. This property is located at 18655 Section Street. It's PPIN number 389630.
Okay, this, the slides are going to cover the following case, too, just to not be redundant in essence of time. If you want to read that for the site plan, 2401.
We have an MOP and a site plan review, so there's really nothing different between the two. So, instead of going through, we'll ask you to vote on each one, because it's a little different. But if you want to go ahead and read that agenda. Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll put them together. Last agenda item is SR 24.01, request of the applicant Jade Consulting LLC, acting on behalf of the owner, Two Hands Design and Development LLC, for site plan approval of Hilltop Lot 29. The property is approximately 1.131 acres and is zoned APUD, Planned Unit Development. The property is located at 18655 Section Street, and it's PPIN number 389630.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we go. Okay, so this is request of Jade, on behalf of the owner, for approval of preliminary plat and site plan approval. Ordinance 1736 for the Hilltop PUD specifically addresses Lot 29 when it came to be, and referring to it as a community house designed to foster connections and serve as common ground for the surrounding neighborhoods. And Jade is here, and the property is located on South Section Street, south of Twin Beach Road. And there's your visual. And that's the site plan, which we saw in September, I think, of last year, too, when they were getting, let me get that. Okay, so this has to do with that amendment to the PUD. The original setbacks in the ordinance for Lot 29 were, the front was 100 feet from Section Street Center Line. And that's because when it, at the inception of Hilltop, it was under Baldwin County jurisdiction. And that is the Baldwin County Highway Construction setback. However, it's since been annexed into the city, so we changed it in that amendment. The community house structure shall have a maximum height of two stories, and because it does slope and because of the shape, the second floor might be below the main floor. And the building height is estimated to be 31.67 feet. The structures shall have a maximum building footprint of 3,600 square feet for total, or a total of 5,600 for both floors. And the proposed uses are retail office space, three residential units, and a restaurant. And the building will be made up primarily of painted brick, painted lap siding, asphalt shingle roof, and aluminum overhangs and metal railings. Utilities, Faro Hope is providing gas, water, and sewer. Riviera's got the electricity. AT&amp;T is available for the communications. This one did not trigger a traffic study either. Stormwater was thoroughly viewed, and there was, you know, a long, long thing in the packet you can read if you want to. But there are two dry detention retention bio swells on site. The site drains on a single direction with approximately 14 feet of relief from east to west into a valley drainage feature that is an upper tributary of Point Clear Creek. The lot's proposed improvements for stormwater management will correlate with the master drainage plan of the Hilltop subdivision. And the combined systems will regulate post-development runoff release rates below their respective pre-development rates. And there was an extensive landscaping plan submitted that's been reviewed and approved, as well as a tree protection plan, and the required buffers for the parking lot and the abutting incompatible land use are also included in the landscape plan. So, the parking meets the requirements, and there's perimeter landscape screening per the tree ordinance that is included. The plat includes interior sidewalks, and they also connect to an existing meandering sidewalk on South Section that you see from the road. The proposed green space looks like a preserved type of green space, because it features large swaths of undeveloped trees. It surrounds different water features, and it has some topography. And at 58%, it exceeds the requirements for the green space for the site. And locations to see heights of exterior lights. The only exterior lights anticipated are small-scale landscape lighting. The mechanical equipment has been finalized, and they appear on the site plan. There is proposed black aluminum railing fence along the 106-foot, linear feet retaining wall between the parking lot and southern stormwater management area, and it's made of modular blocks. There is a dumpster collection, has two commercial dumpsters, and they are enclosed and surrounded by painted composite siding and also some landscaping. At this time, a site plan has not been submitted, but there will be one submitted, and it has to be conformed to the sign ordinance. And their erosion control plan was submitted with application, and that was determined to be accessible. And that's kind of one of the elevations of the proposed building. So, this just in a few hours ago, for number two, we actually got the fire flow test from Jade a few hours ago after this was sent to John, so two is no longer an issue. So, I'll just read this to go on record. Okay. We do recommend a conditional approval of SD 2412 with the following condition, and that's the signage plan shall conform to the sign ordinance. And you guys are going to vote twice, because one is for site plan and one is for, okay, the MOP.
And then the next slide, I'll give you the site plan. I do want to, and this is more of a conversation, see if this is, this is worthwhile. The site plan will move on to the.
City Council.
City Council agenda, so you're right, making a recommendation for that one. The MOP, because it was five units or more, goes through a preliminary and final. We probably would have recommended a waiver if it wasn't for that fire flow test, because if, if a subdivision comes in with no improvements, even if it's more than the minimum allowed, we would recommend someone apply, ask for a waiver and do preliminary and final at the same time, if, if no improvements are required. Now, we can't approve that tonight, because we have to advertise that waiver request. It has to go out in the letters, just a legal, legal thing. So, I want to broach this option. If the applicant's willing, planning commission is okay with it, we could potentially table the MOP and get the waiver advertised and approve preliminary and final at the same time instead of having to come back to you with a final plat application for the MOP with really nothing to do. There's a, there's no improvements, there's no bonds, there's nothing tied to that final approval. It's just a, just for efficiency's sake. But that's all staff had, and I do, I'm going to see one I haven't seen before. So, this, this is unusual. So, Jade and Trey are the.
So, Trey, generate, Jade Consulting. So, what Hunter's alluding to is, if you do this long enough, you'll present something that you've never done before. So, the conditions for the site were for, I guess the condition before you was for approval, with two conditions, one being the fire flow, which we received from the city, and that's been since removed, so now it's submitting for a site plan approval. The owner, Mr. Tickle, would like for us to add a condition to the approval. So, I've never done that before, but here we are. We're going to add, we're going to request, respectful request to add a condition to the approval for making that south buffer 10 feet, I'll make it 15 feet instead of 10 feet. And so, we will actually just move the site up five feet and make that buffer wider. So, that's a, that's our request.
Do we have to vote on that separately from the, or is it? On, on his.
Is this new, is this new addition?
Is the condition consistent with what the zoning ordinance in the PUD said? It would be in excess of what the PUD says.
I don't want to. Hunter's request to waiver, and I appreciate that, is really irrelevant to us. I mean, I got to come back next month to a meeting. I got to come back in six months to a meeting. It's really irrelevant. You know, it's, it's whatever y'all want to do, and that's easy enough for us. This other one is just something that, instead of having to resubmit the site plans, we're going to redraw it. I just want to put it to record that we're going to update the drawing, so that the neighbors understand that we will make that a 15-foot buffer instead of a 10. 10 is per the, the tree ordinance. It's per what's required. That's what we have shown in the drawings right now. But we want to put it to record that we're actually going to make that a 15.
The good thing about having that a condition is it removes all arguments of 20 years down the road. Having that our honor, and then the White House, now that makes it easier for staff to enforce what is actually there. Instead of going to the regulations and saying, "No, it's 10 foot, if they can breathe, you know, in the conditions, it's a little more or less." And Michelle, you really reviewed this, and you see? I don't see any conflict.
And your, your talk on the, on the waiver is just tabling this until next month?
I mean, like I said, it, it, that's, just the MOP. In any case, you know, please make a recommendations as a site plan, whatever you should choose, so we can move that on to the council. I was just kind of thinking there, there's many amendments and stuff, if this Lot 29 went through with PUDs and. If there was nothing to do, we could do, we could just add it as a condition to the site plan, that that would be, that way we would be green. But if somebody, it's no urgency, we can make it, prove the preliminary tonight, and we'll get another application and come back to you with a file.
Yeah, I just, the MOP has to come back up anyway, doesn't it? So, and that's not, that's really not part of either one of these.
So, that is why we'll, we'll do preliminary approval tonight and site plan, make a recommendation to the city council, and we'll see you when we get that issue for the final.
It's been advertised, so you can open, you can hear from the public tonight, too, if someone came to speak on the MOP.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public meeting. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? Both of these?
Hi, Gary Gover. The, when I looked through the packet that came with this, I got the impression that the exterior sidewalk, the sidewalk along 181, would be left partially incomplete and that to be finished at a later date. I don't know if that's exactly the plan, but if that's so, how do we ensure that this gets?
No, this is on Section Street.
No, this is... It's on Section Street.
Yeah, Section Street.
Oh, okay. I didn't notice. The other one was on 181, so I just want to make sure.
Oh, did I say that?
Yes. It's okay. I just want to make sure we were on the right.
The exterior sidewalk along Section Street would be left partially incomplete in front of the buildings and so on, that the path would be through the interior. So if that's correct, then how does this sidewalk get finished later?
The sidewalk and the boardwalk is complete, it's there. The only thing that's happening is not a public sidewalk, but they're connecting the building to the existing sidewalk. I mean, any, now, if the question is, how do we complete sidewalks up and down Section Street, that's, y'all seen where we've required, or you can only require the sidewalks on this property when the, when the first, I believe it was the first phase of the residential component, the sidewalk was built. So that's what we typically require, and as, as we get enough, well, city or county kind of sometimes comes in and fills in the gaps, but that's, the sidewalk's there, unless I'm missing something.
I think the main point, it's an interior sidewalk, not a exterior sidewalk.
Yeah, it's basically from the front door to the, I mean, how long, how long of it stretches, that 15 feet, 20 feet? That's the only, only thing being done, they've already, of course, we would make them put a sidewalk in if it wasn't already there, but they did that in an earlier phase. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
I'm Frank Vitello, 821 Volpe's Avenue, Fairhope. The reason for this request, this change, Jason, the developer, was gracious enough to work with the homeowners that abut that south property line. So that's the reason for this request through him. So he's actually increasing the setback from 10 to 15 to work with the homeowners. I representing one of the homeowners. Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, if y'all don't mind, if that's, if you're okay with that 15 feet, let's talk about sometimes just that, putting that on as a condition, what sits within that, you know, that is Is that the whole south border? Plant material that will be maintained, you know, so... But it still has to have a buffer, right? There's, what, I think what we're looking for is that that physical buffer
Okay.
Is there indefinitely, so that it's actually planted, and right now, our regulations say what should be planted in the 10 feet, so as a condition, it can just be memorialized.
The same subregs as a 10-foot.
And there's options there, you can, Paul, you know this better than I do, but you can do a 20-foot undisturbed kind of natural forested buffer, you can do a double row of shrubs, you can do a fence in a single row of shrubs. Then, what, I'm sorry, what? The, he said the landscape plant shows the plants themselves, it'll just be dimensionally a 15-foot. So, and I'm okay with that, if we have that.
So is that, is that considered non-compatible land use on the back of there?
It is.
Okay.
So this is commercial, even though it sits within a PUD, and the property just to the south is residential. Okay. And that's, that's the entire length of the south border, right? Is that? Of this particular lot, now, right, right behind, to the west of this lot, you get in some... Well, I mean, just this lot, I'm not, I'm not talking about the rest of the suburb, just this lot? Yeah. Yeah, we just want to make sure, you know, that, that kind of helps memorialize that this buffer is there indefinitely. So if somebody goes out and clears it out, they have to replant, is what I want to make sure.
And the public hearing is still open, Mr. Chair, if you want to ask, if anyone else wants to speak, and then close the public hearing.
Anyone else wish to speak to either one of these, both of these? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Any discussion from the commissioners? I'll accept a motion for SD 24.12, for the preliminary plat approval of Hilltop Lot
I make a motion that we approve SD 2412, along with staff's recommendations with the removal of the fire flow, because our staff recommendations are not the same as yours, with the addition of the 10-foot setback to a 15-foot setback and same subdivision buffer.
On which? Sorry, and just to be clear, we're buffer instead of setback.
Oh, buffer, yes, buffer. So you, I don't have it to go by, because you don't have it in here.
It's the south, it's the south border of the lot. So the buffer increases from 10 feet to 15 feet on the south border of the lot.
Do you want me to read it from here?
Okay, so to clarify, if I may.
Please.
To clarify your motion, as I understood it, you made a motion to approve SD 24.12, subject to the first condition of staff, that signage plan shall conform to the sign ordinance, and the second condition being what was agreed to by the developer in the meeting today, which is the change from the 10-foot buffer to a 15-foot buffer, as shown in the landscape plans.
Correct.
On the south
On the south border.
Did I capture your motion accurately?
Perfectly.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Isn't that what you get hired to do?
I will second that wonderful motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say no, or nay. Okay.
Okay, next one.
If you had these updated, we would have not, no problem.
Fire flow came in two hours ago.
And for this one, just so everyone's on the same page, this is a site plan review, so this will ultimately be going to city council.
Right.
So this will be a recommendation, whatever conditions you would like to put on them, if you're going to approve them, it would be a recommendation to city council.
Okay.
Because the other one was a plat, that's where the buffer was at, I don't think we need that new one to set one.
Okay.
Another council will know if it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll certainly put that, we'll make sure the council knows that.
Okay. All right, I'll accept a motion for 24.01 on a recommendation to the city council. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend for approval to the city council, SR 24.1, 24.01, subject to staff conditions.
Just the number one, signage.
Signage.
Subject to staff, okay, yeah, to list, the staff recommendations would be signage plan shall conform to the sign ordinance, and the staff will make the council aware of the increase in the buffer on the second, on the south side, so that they're aware it has increased.
Good enough, Chris.
Do you want to say it first, Chris?
No, that, that is, that's fine.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending approval to the city council for SR 24.01, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Passes unanimously. Any further business from the staff? Nope. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, boy, nobody's jumping at this.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.